... Regular meeting, we're going to build the board trustees to rise.
Pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and the justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Present.
Or I'm told is that a vacation. Gibson.
Here.
And Raisik.
Present.
This time we're going to call Nick and Mark Otten for Psychophotolus for the invitation.
Let us take a moment and put ourselves in the presence of God, who is Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of unity. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as you make decisions that might affect the citizens of our community, the village of Lomond. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, but for the service of our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me, on the agenda that's open to the public, agenda items normally. Any thinkers? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. I'm taking a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
That would be a consent motion. Paul's there.
Okay, Paul.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Yes.
And our deputy clerk Powell myself attended the Will Grundy Clerk's Association Biennial or Biennial, there was a best speaker, Jeanne Hyatt, from the State Archives, which is actually part of the Secretary of State's office, and repairing, archiving files, getting rid of old files, and those types of procedures, which has ever been done in this situation. So I've been in contact with her to have her come in and advise us and get us on the right path. And it's interesting too, because with regard to shredding files, unauthorized shredding of files is a class four felony, and its conviction is three to six years in prison. It's a need for mission to destroy public records. So it was a very interesting meeting before we were.
Thank you, sir.
Under the mayor's agenda, we have fiscal year 2015 municipal vehicle acquisition approval. I believe that applies to three departments. Mr. Batista, would you like to make your presentation another time?
In regards to vehicle acquisitions, first, what is it, the board would, the board two vehicles for Tisa Park, it'd be 2015 Dodge Chargers, each Charger cost not to exceed $23,000, correct me if I'm wrong.
23, 332.
23, 332. If this would be purchased through the suburban purchasing cooperative, so you would ask that to consider?
It's, it's actually through Thomas Dodge, and it's through the South Suburban Conference of Mayors and the Indiana Marshals Association.
So we would ask for both acquisitions, as well as for Public Works, 2015 F-550 dump truck, not to exceed the price of sub-ty. And for the emergency management.
Mr. Batista. Just to clarify, I believe on the Dodge Chargers, does that include the light, considering everything else, or does that?
No, that's the base car.
And then for the Public Works vehicle, that would be the price, including everything, even the dump bed and everything else, which should be after the fact. Because they hit the raw chassis, if I understand correctly, and that, but that's a complete package, where I see that lighting, we typically do at house?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're working here.
And lastly, for the emergency management agency, the position of a 2015 Ford Expedition not to exceed, let me guess, 27,188. Now that's, we're right at the cutoff for ordering, so that price may fluctuate within , you're going to take a thousand dollars, so somewhere near the 20,000.
Are these all in the 2013 proposal?
Yes. I'm just looking again back there to our finance director. Is that a yes for sure?
That is a yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Am I correct that the two police vehicles, is the normal pattern we follow as far as safety retiring or something?
We would be, actually, what we would like to do is transfer, move over two vehicles from the PD's fleet over to EMA, to the emergency management. Helps us not get purchase. Just for the board's understanding, in order for the emergency management agency to exist in mutual aid association, we have to be able to provide vehicles, manpower, equipment, at any given moment to be accepted into the Southern Cook County Mutual Aid Association and also the Will County. So we're obviously in a growing stage at this point, so we understand, we'll take handouts, we'll take whatever we can get at this point, but the chief has graciously offered two vehicles to.
How many miles, how many miles do the, the, the current vehicles? Yes. How many miles do they currently have? What's the, what's the stance on those approximately?
What do they achieve? I didn't hear what you said.
One point, probably about 10,000.
Yeah, they're 100,000 plus, between probably between 130 and 120, somewhere around there.
And is that, I don't know, vehicles used for control, it's not just how many miles it has, but just raw engine hours there?
It's chassis, engine, and transmission, and we're trying to avoid this scenario that we've had in the past, where if we don't replace these vehicles on a regular, consistent basis, we start putting motors, transmissions, chassis components, and as long as we're continuously keeping the fleet within a couple of years old, we're not going to be doing that kind of work, and everything stays under warranty, which also saves us.
Can I back up just a little bit? You said that, which cars are they?
The Chargers.
No, the ones that were retired.
The white ones.
Crown Victorias. Crown Victorias are going to be moved over to EMA.
Yes.
And they have 190, 120,000.
120,000, 130,000.
And the whole goal is moving them is to EMA, so we have access to a good, to at least two working vehicles, should an emergency arise, and we have to submit them.
And last night, Trustee Gonzalez, I participated in a cert training event as part of EMA that I'm involved with, off of Village of Lomond in Crete, and I had to use my own personal vehicle, because we didn't have a vehicle, which I didn't mind doing, but I think probably moving forward, we ought to be using vehicles from the village, Village of Crete, of course, they've been doing this for 25 years, I believe that's six vehicles that they use along with a lot of other equipment, so we're really just beginning the equipment mode for the EMA, but we do have to start somewhere.
Question for you, Mr. Batista, is where is the EMA vehicle now, the old, the tenets?
The 2004 Ford Explorer is already, the part of Public Works, number two, BP.
Or, yeah, BP.
And at this point, it has 200 and I believe 10,000, somewhere in that area, miles on it, it's a gas hub, or a transmission, we need to see if I can get a seat in for that thing, so just to keep an eye on the junk. So we can still keep it, at this point, we've kind of got this.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Holston, but Crete is seven miles, I don't think that you need you can ride a bike over there. I don't agree with that, we need a village vehicle to go from point A to point B to seven miles.
I'm sorry, Trustee Gray, I must have said that incorrectly. Once we got there, we had to go out, do an exercise in the field, and in the case of an emergency, our agreement is such, we might have to go to Wilmington or somewhere else down the road, and if so, we'll need to take some kind of vehicle to get people there.
Firmly lighted and equipped.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't mind riding a bicycle, by the way. Thank you for the compliment.
I would like to bring up one other thing, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was, had a meeting with our superintendent yesterday, going back to the big number of the 75 or 70,000 vehicle that we're looking for, I would actually like our superintendent to explain that, the process that goes through with getting that type of vehicle and that kind of cost, because the new truck that we purchased two years ago, the blue truck that he is now driving, isn't just something we go to a lot and say, here's what we want, we get it, it's two weeks later. It's a four to six month process with certain specifications, so if Superintendent Gonzalez could just explain that to people, what, why the cost is so high, then?
Good evening, Board. Yes, Trustee Gray, thank you. Because this vehicle's through the South Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, the bidding process has been completed, but as the mayor stated, you're only buying a chassis cab. The other portion of the vehicle has to be built specifically for the vehicle when you're ordering it. And last year when we purchased a, last two years ago, we purchased a 550, we went with a stainless steel bed on it, and that is where I attended a seminar up in Monroe, for those of you that remember, where I got us a free plow that we hadn't used from a different maker before. I can't get that same option this year, it's only a one-time deal, and so it's kind of added to the cost a little bit. But basically what you do is you order the chassis cab from the dealer, they send it to Monroe, and through the South Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, they give you the price to equip it with all the safety, dump bed, hydraulic system, plows, salt spreaders, any safety lighting, any equipment that's needed for the vehicle, on a has-built specific, because Monroe built all their highs and lows. When I toured the Monroe Truck Equipment Facility, when I did do the tour for the boss plaza at their facility, when I went to Monroe, Wisconsin, every component is done in-house in their warehouse factory per order, and then they get to fit onto the chassis cab, and then brought to their local distribution sites, one which is in jail yet, where they assemble that unit, complete, and get it ready for delivery, and that's where we take delivery. The urgency in ordering this is because the years prior when we did this, it took six, seven months to actually do that. Ford has a waiting time for the chassis, then Monroe has a waiting time with all the other municipalities and government agencies that have already put in their orders, as Chief and Ruben can proudly attest to, we're kind of late on involved, that's why we're trying to bring this up now, because the longer we wait, the longer it's going to take us to get our product, and in some cases, we may not even be able to get them this year, or put it in the next year. So the process is lengthy, we try to get these done ahead of time, and with the, with the bug that running into kind of an excess couple of months here, and tweaking and fine-tuning, we're here basically to just try and get the process rolling and moving along, and the cost of these things, because we want with the stainless steel bed, is to try to prevent the reoccurring costs of the bed rusting out. The one tons that we have right now, when we replaced the bed, it was $7,000 for a new steel body bed, and safety lane will fail once they start popping holes to them. So we took the stainless steel approach, it was very successful the last couple of years, no rust, no, no problems with them, very reliable, and that's the approach we're going to take this year.
And part of, if I may, one of the problems we run into is we do all gross materials like salt.
Yes.
That are going, as soon as you nick the paint off the bed, you're, you need to have a stainless for that purpose.
As I had explained to Trustee Gray and Arne, and getting the department up to speed with him, what we're doing, because it's a multi-use vehicle, it's used year-round with dump capabilities, it'll haul the spoil, and when the name breaks, it'll take the stone, it'll take the rocks, it won't scratch that protective coating, so that when the winter time comes, whether it's, you know, powder coating, it's a steel body frame, we put the salt in it, we use it for spreading, and it gives us another fuel out there, as we all know, at this winter, another truck out there, be able to push snow and spread salt, it definitely help, I think, give you a jab down a little quicker, a little more efficiently, so. Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to, number one, I think in terms of your recommended bypass bid process, since SPC is already down the bidding course, correct?
Yes, sir, I would recommend that a portion of the purchases put on the record, they've been bypassed the bid process, because it's $20,000. The South Suburban basically did that for you by purchasing it, but you still want it on the record, they did bypassing the official bid process. Then the second motion would be to purchase the, the vehicles as presented by Mr. Batista. We might want to consider motions not to exceed for each vehicle, I think there are three vehicles.
I think it was stated in the document, correct? Okay. So, four vehicles. Right. So I'll entertain a motion to bypass the bid process for this, and the bidding has already been optimal liability by state stater. So I'll entertain a motion to bypass the process on this.
Hello.
Second.
And Holston and Raisik. Roll call please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the requisition as stated in the document that's presented in the board for the four big.
The document presented to the board only shows the cars, it gives the man again for the truck.
Not to exceed 70,000, sir. I'm waiting for Kerry Motors' fleet to confirm it, their price that we've come up with so far is 59,166, but he couldn't tell me if it included his license. Yes, sir.
28,1.
28,188. I'll make that motion based upon those numbers along with the document.
Okay. First by Holston.
Second.
Second by Pop. Roll call please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Not in serious stuff, to the sort of stuff.
This is just, this is on the agenda.
Well, I, some such a gamble, it's valuable for some. That one. Uh-oh. Definitely have to laugh. I'll trade a clown for a trusty. Nah, nah, I don't need that. No, I didn't, is he a cornball? I am a student, you are. Item number two is a circus, is, we have a circus scheduled for August 27th, it'll be on the property that is slated for the grocery store, which is the five acres on the corner of Egypt from the Manhattan Road, that would be the, it's at the southeast corner, and that'll be on August 27th, Wednesday. I also just, as a point of clarification here, they have a board meeting night, so I don't know if we want to.
I won't be wearing my suit that night.
I'm not sure what suit you're wearing that night. Anyway, so I guess we also need to consider either rescheduling that August 27th meeting to an alternate night.
Question on the location, what about, where are we going to park?
We are going to do our best to deal with parking in that area, if we have to do a shuttle of some sort to help people. We talked to the, to the circus coordinator, he says, you know, when people come out to these things, they find places to park, and I understand, we don't want to encroach on the businesses that are immediately there and all that.
Oh, they might like that, I'm not sure there's enough parks about there.
I, there's been some, some discussion internally about the possibility of having, perhaps I prefer parking right there on the premises, right there for, say, handicap and senior and things like that, and then maybe having a shuttle for parking, you know, from perhaps Lomond Plaza, as well as Midwest Crossing, right there, which is right across, and if we can just shuttle people back and forth. Trustee Gray, I think he's going to ride the bicycle or something, I'm not sure.
He's got a tando.
Five feet from there. The one thing I did bring up, Mr. Holston, Trustee Holston, to Ruben, the big question was, I believe there's 37 trucks?
Thirty-seven vehicles.
Okay.
Seventeen semis.
Okay, so we're talking 17, 25 semis. What I brought up, the truck, Mr. Batista was asking, the trucks now, if we can park those vehicles in one section, so that we can have more parking for our residents.
Yeah, and at the nerve, you have to think, to understand the way this operation is, it's not like we've had a lot for carnival type thing, and they all want to park right out here, just, they're there for that day, they come in, set up, they tear down all in one day. Maybe one night, it depends on what time they get in from their previous, where they're going to, they want all their stuff right to there, so they're not having to shift and maneuver, and they keep stuff ready, supplied right in their vehicles, we did ask about that. I think even followed, again, we just say, are you sure you can, that was parked across the logistics, the Walmart logistics.
Right.
Or whatever. They have a lot of their stuff, they're getting in and out and moving around, I don't think it's a circle wagons, if you will, but they want to have them there, so they're going to be down a little further on the south end of all that, from where the big tent thing would be and all that, but good question, very relevant, but unfortunately, the way they operate, they like to be able to get in, get out, and keep all their supplies, so they're not having to like, you know, deal with those cat issues, so we will find a way to, I would recommend giving priority parking to seniors and disabled, things of that sort, right there. We're going to all park at your house tomorrow.
That's right.
So.
No problem with that.
He's charging 20 bucks a car.
Put them anywhere for money. So, anyhow, so I just want to bring everybody's attention, it's, it's first time we've done, well, I dare I say, anything we do is never the first time, because, I mean, Lomond used to have a fairer grounds, you know, they used to have a lot of things here many, many years ago, before any of us were even thought. But, yeah, so this will be fun, it'll be interesting, it'll be a week and a half before our Fall Fest, and it's not, it costs us, I think, $300 to book them, and yet we get a small percentage off of the ticket sales. So ultimately, we might end up making a couple thousand dollars off of it, but it's just giving our people in our community another opportunity to have, you know, come together, they expect to have anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 people, I think, per show, and if they sell enough tickets to the shows, they'll have a third show. So they have two shows, one at 4:30, one at 7:30, so, and they actually have a series of activities, almost like if you want to bring your kids out the day of, throughout the day, they're going to have little, oh, here's some things you didn't know about a circus, and how they operate, and you get to see when they do the setup, and the tent, they actually still use the elephants to raise the tent, so.
That being said, so the setup is probably done like the 24, 48 hours prior to shows?
Everything's in and out the same day.
Okay, so, and all I would say too is, granted, we love our circus, truly, but I would submit that we might not want to cancel a village board meeting to go to a circus. Yes, we want to support the things that go in our town, especially if they're having two shows, going several.
I, I'm saying we go several ways, I'm just merely suggesting, maybe we bump our meeting to the 26, you know, just the day before or something like that, so that we can still have a meeting, but we just change the date.
Or the time, you know, move it up a couple hours, so I.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, we're going to have staff that's going to, you know, be available up there and all that, I don't want to be drawn out, leave a place and everything else, I just want to make sure we're not distracted by, you know, so in my, in my opinion, I want to still have a meeting, but I'd be more inclined to just move it a day or two in one direction or the other. So if, and we might have to decide that tonight, I just want to make sure.
So we'd be better to talk about it tonight, because most of us have schedules to go out by the while.
It's usually in the sun.
The day before, I'm okay, just.
You guys okay if we just make it to the 26? Trustee Pop, 26.
Right.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Trustee Gray.
Trustee Horn. Yep.
You need a motion for that?
Sure, let's make a, I'll entertain a motion to move the August, the second meeting of August from the 27th to the 26th. So you want to make that motion?
Second.
Gonzalez, Raisik. Roll call please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Four. What circus is this?
The Kelly Miller Circus, one of the, one of the ringmasters, I believe, is actually a descendant of Bailey.
Ringling.
Ringling. I didn't know it even personally, so to me, it's just a circus. Justice, sir. Hey, when you're a clown, go on to stand, right? All right, thank you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I forget, we have a couple of columns in there.
Oh, we have a ringmaster here, we need that.
All right, if we, if we may proceed, sorry. Item number three, radio advertising. We had an opportunity recently, I believe, actually Larry Bedford Park, one municipality, didn't know the municipality you represent, has used radio advertising in the past, and it's been fairly effective.
We advertise on WGN, we advertise the Blackhawks, the White Sox, we've been approached by other entities, and what we've done, we've done it for three years, and what we've done is when businesses come in, we do ask them, is it, does he add help? And we found out, it has helped us tremendous time. And then what we did after that is we asked the businesses if they want us to continue the program, and it's helped us quite a bit.
We were, we had the opportunity to meet with, come on up. Representatives from WLS, AM and FM, and they made a very effective presentation.
Thank you very much.
And
Even more.
Based on the demographics of the, their listening audience and everything else, we believe it would be palatable, especially for business and things of that sort. One of the things you guys are going to see may choke on a little bit, but after talking to Luke Gonsal, or to our finance director, all, or at least a significant proportion of this could be, could be underwritten by tip funds, especially for promoting the development in those districts. So that's something else to keep in mind. It could also, depends on how we do it, we could partner with a couple of our local businesses, and let them share a portion of the, of the airtime, maybe a couple different months, we give them opportunity, I'm thinking perhaps it'd be Golfista, perhaps University of Biscay, somebody like that, that would actually generate some traffic and visibility and all that within our community. We benefit from both frankly, in different ways. So it'd be an interesting measure of the success to do something of that sort, so we can get a fair test, if we do like a month, two months, or something like that, highlighted two different businesses, just to get an idea, because they're going to probably be more apt to hear about it, and so, go ahead, if you'll go ahead and give your presentation, I will steal your thunder.
I am going to do the Cliff Notes version, please feel free to stop me and ask any questions along the way. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. A little bit of background on me, I actually came from WBPM, joined WLS about three months ago, I was hired on specifically to focus on helping growing municipalities. My background is with Bedford Park, I actually started Bedford Park Campaign and worked with them for four years when they first started with WBPM.
We don't know each other.
Yeah, I've met you, yeah, I've met you several times.
Okay.
That's okay. But, yeah, so, actually, you know, WBPM, or Bedford was pretty much the pioneer of radio advertising for municipalities, and did so very successfully. Obviously, it's, it's all industrial, it's only 500 residents, but they were sitting on a lot of empty industrial space, and they needed help. You know, I need programs with municipalities, they're a marathon, not a sprint, you know, you can't go on air and expect for phones to start ringing up. You know, you can't go on air and expect for phones to start ringing up, you know, off the hook the next day. But there's a lot of levels to it. You know, the main thing is branding and putting your community on the map. You know, things are turning around now and every, you know, Chicagoan community has unique initiatives, growth initiatives, whether it's residential, commercial, retail, or a combination of both. So the flexibility with these radio programs really allow us to, you know, accomplish several things. Again, I had no idea where Bedford Park was. I lived in Chicago for twelve years. How many times I'd flown out of Midway, never knew Bedford even existed, to be quite honest with you. You know, and a lot of business decision makers didn't really realize either. So, you know, with stations of that nature, the BBMs, the WLSs of the world, we know that how many, roughly how many business decision makers that we reach, how many families, our average age is thirty-five, fifty-four. There are a lot of families out there, you know, coming out of the city that are looking to move their, and raise their families in a nice community with great schools. It's very expensive in the city. I mean, me alone, in the past two years, I've had about six groups of friends that have, you know, ventured out to the suburbs, but they're not from this area originally. So how do they, how do people go about finding you? And the key of a program like this is being known before you're needed. So putting your name out there, all the great, there's a lot of hidden gems out here in the South and Southwest suburbs. Initially, when I first met with Mayor and Ruben, this was going to be a community discovery and encompass really kind of any community that wanted to come on board, but my starting point was the South and Southwest suburbs. We have since changed that. We have decided to focus on the South and Southwest suburbs on the onset of this for probably the first six months, so it's going to be WLS Community Discovery Program, discover the South and Southwest suburbs. I think that this area does not really get the attention that it deserves. And again, there are so many unique opportunities, beautiful communities, great schools, lots of room for economic development, and the location is key. So with that being said, again, we are shooting to roll this out, I don't think I said this yet, but July twenty-first, we actually have three signed contracts from South, Southwest municipalities, which is great.
Do we ask what, so?
Absolutely.
One minute, thousand?
Well, the very first one that's signed on was a new, Village of New Lennox. Crestwood is being reviewed right now, and Lockport. Okay, so how can a program like this help Moni? Again, depending on your specific initiatives, residential growth is huge. I've noticed in both same friends suburbs, I've told you that have moved out to the burbs from the city, cranes are out there again, you know, houses are being built. Huge opportunity again for both residential and a new business standpoint. Whether it's a small business owner looking to start business, to expand their business, or whether it's a company, you know, looking to relocate or expand. You know, if you have the, if you have the space and you have the opportunities, our stations are definitely effective in attracting this audience. Now, this program, you know, something important that we did, and I learned with experience of working with Bedford for four years, yes, there is a radio element to it, and that's huge. And between the two stations combined, we reached about one point six million people throughout the Chicagoland area. But just as equally as important are all the digital platforms that we incorporate in this program. And the whole idea around this, in which we build radio schedules and streaming and online banners, is the Community Discovery Portal. We are actually going to take now about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars between these two stations of our own commercial time to brand this Community Discovery at the South and Southwest Suburbs Program. This is going to be a portal on both of our websites that eat, sleep, and breathe twenty-four-seven, in which we're driving our listeners to use this as a tool when, you know, discovering communities in which they might want to raise their family, move to, start a business in, et cetera. So we are driving our listeners to our websites in which we have fixed features, and we've always had these fixed features on our station. This is a new one that we are introducing, obviously. Where, say Moni, for instance, will have a listing on our site, about a three hundred by two fifty, you know, like banner ad, you click into it, and there pops up your own microsite, customized Moni, in which you can do several different things with, you know, mayor blog, you can list available properties, you can promote your circus coming up, your Fall Fest, and all of this will link back into your website as well, or wherever you want us to link it. So it's nice in the search for the things, because all the traffic coming through our websites will drive traffic into your website, and it brings you up organically without paying to come up at the top of searches when people do Google searches for, you know, housing in the South suburbs or business opportunities in the South suburbs. So, again, I'm sorry, I'm on page eight. That's just a mock-up, just nothing professionally done, something I put together of what this page could actually look like. As your listing on the Community Discovery page, include photo galleries, video tours, maps, promote specific events, resident testimonials, business owner testimonials, mayor blogs, and again, available property listings. So really, anything you want. And the nice thing about our station, aside from the radio, is we have an incredible digital team. So anything that you do from a creative standpoint, whether it's radio or online, with us, it's as turnkey for Moni as you can even imagine. I mean, you don't have to worry about the headache of writing the commercials, producing the commercials, the creative or banner ads supporting certain events or initiatives that you may have. And it's, nothing is set in stone. I'm sure, as you know, Bedford Park, they didn't have one commercial in four years. You know, it's, it's something that I manage very closely with them on a monthly basis. We changed the creative where it need be, kind of went in phases, went from just kind of a branding commercial of Bedford, you know, promoting, it's on the world's largest rail yard, minutes away from the Midway Airport, you know, transportation, water capacity, all of that. But then we went into digging into why companies have done so well in Bedford over the years and included some of the existing companies in some testimonials, new companies that moved in as a result of the advertising. Mayor Brady allowed for them to, you know, take twenty, twenty seconds of their sixty-second commercial and welcome them to Bedford, and they would come into our studios and do testimony as to how it was so easy to do business in Bedford, why they decided to move their company to Bedford. So we can get very, very creative with us. And again, nothing is set in stone. You know, your initiatives are going to change from season to season. I know, when I first started working with Bedford, I believe they were, they, forty percent of their properties were open. I had lunch with Mayor Brady about a month ago, and he said they're ninety percent full. I don't know if that's.
Probably ninety-five.
Yeah, ninety-five, and that's, that's huge. So if you can imagine, I mean, Bedford started small, too. And then I'm sure, all the, all the extra PR that comes with just doing a campaign like this, too, that's just extra freebies. You know, he did have to report like how much he spent over the years, and that's, that has increased as he's moved on to WGN and the Hawks and Bears Radio. But I just really want you to know that he, they started very small, and we grew them, because as those companies were coming in, the tax revenue off of one company, more than paying, you know, for the investment that he made. But strategically, you know, you can do this. It's, radio is about consistency, frequency, reach, and most of all, the creativeness of your commercial. You don't have to air seventies a week, you don't have to air four weeks a month, but just consistent, consistency, and just that association with these two heritage radio stations is huge, because it lends credibility to our advertisers and our partners.
And you also have a provision for Big Andy or one of the others to come up and.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, so in a nutshell, you're going to have your own bank of radio advertising. There's three different levels of involvement in this. You're also going to have your listing on the, in our portal, our Community Discovery Portal, that's going to be there twenty-four-seven. This includes online streaming as well, so traditional commercials that you're here in your car. But we're also reaching the at-work listener through our streaming. And we have very high streaming numbers between WLS AM and the FM, because it's a work-friendly listening station, Chicago's classic hits, there isn't anything offensive. On the LS side, you know, people like, there are certain programs on WLS AM. Maybe not Rush Limbaugh, but that's, we can stay away, that's a conflict of interest with your advertising. We can, you know, use a separation of not hearing your commercials within that show, within a certain time. So additionally, every package at every level has banner ads on our, on our homepage. You, I'm on page ten right now. If you look to the right of that screenshot of the homepage, that's a three hundred by two fifty banner ad. So these aren't ads that are going to be like if you go into different pages of the website, they're always going to be on that homepage. And then every, at every level, you're guaranteed a certain amount of impressions. And that means eyes that are going to see your ad. So we can even geo-target those if you want to just target within a certain mile radius of your community on the online portion, so your impressions aren't wasted on someone that's super far where they may not be likely to move. You can use these banner ads to promote your events. You can have a general banner ad just promoting Moni and linking it into your site. You can promote your Fall Fest, you can promote, you know, any fundraiser or toy drive at Christmas. You know, there's, like I mentioned before, there's no limitations on changing the creative at this. Usually it's about anything on air or online, about a forty-eight hour tour for us to make adjustments and create some new creative for you. And of course, we wouldn't air anything without your approval, or put anything on our website without your approval. Also, something we added to this program is added value. At every level, at the first base level, we will include one promotion in which WLS Promotions Team will come out and support your events, and you'll get the personality of your choice. We have Land Decker, Beyondie. Beyondie likes, he's all over the place. He loves, and he brings, he does car shows for us, does community festivals. He's about ready to do the Battle in the Burbs. He's going to be out there, I know he played last year, you know. So no, it's a good time. So included in all these programs, we're going to include, you know, the baseline program, one of three events, in which you'll get extra promotion the week leading up to the event. We'll do live commercials from your event, have our promotions team out there, interact with, you know, the families, give away prizes, and Dick signs things, people bring memorabilia. But it's a good time, it just adds to the fun factor. You know, we'll do take pictures and then we'll post them in a photo gallery on our website as well. So the, going into the on-air schedules, this is, what I've found in the past that's worked in my eight years of advertising experience, but specifically with communities, because you have so much going on and, you know, you want to invite people to come out to your community and, you know, take a tour, you know, visit your winery, or, you know, whatever you might want to promote. It's kind of easier to capture the attention of our listeners more towards the middle of the week, going into the weekend. You know, Monday, Tuesday, driving into work, oftentimes you have a lot more on your minds than what you're going to be doing on, over the weekend. So the way that I put these programs together, I ran them a Wednesday through a Sunday. Now, the Wednesday through Friday commercials, what they, what I've used in here are called rotators. So you're going to get about thirty-three percent that will fall in the morning drive, thirty-three percent that will fall in midday, and another thirty-three percent that will fall in the PM drive. So we try to get them as even rotation as we can. Their best times available, but they're guaranteed to fall within those time slots. Also included are some evenings, primetime weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. And then the Wednesday through Sunday, five a to five a, are no-charge spots, those are overnights that we have in charge, you know, for. Also, the added value I mentioned in the event that you're going to get. And another thing, as these communities come on board, we're putting a promotional announcement on both AM and the FM, again, branding the WLS Community Discovery Portal of the South and Southwest suburbs. So we're running our general promos, and as the communities come on board, we're going to tag them in those spots, too. So we're telling listeners to go and use this and check out what's going on here and there, and then we'll say, you know, for instance, Moni. So we'll tag Moni and guaranteed you're going to get five extra mentions. But if we only have four people the first month or two, four communities or five communities, those are going to be divvied up among those one hundred and sixty promos. So the people that come on board early with this are really going to get a lot of bang for their buck, just for those extra mentions. We do have a couple presentations out there for presenting sponsor, old Plank Trail Bank. So this could kind of change the name a little bit, but as we launch it, it's going to be WLS Community Discovery. So it's been very, very well received throughout all the communities. The flexibility of it, you know, it's our proven track record that, you know, it gets results. The visual elements just only help it more with the digital, but not only from a visual standpoint, but also for accountability, that we're doing our job, because you will see, whoever runs your website launching this, comparing your numbers from July of two thousand thirteen to two fourteen, and it's only going to go, you know, up and up and up. Radio isn't so much calling, you know, call somebody, call this number, call this number. Some direct response radio advertising still works that way, but I can't tell you how much success we've had with Email Donna at the villageofbedfordpark.com. We changed their commercial, just to give you a quick example, we changed their commercial. Mayor Brady was like, you know, we need a gas station, there's only one gas station in Bedford Park. And it's private, it was, it's Costco. So he wanted to add a commercial targeting gas station chains into his rotation of existing commercials that were airing.
For grocery store.
Yeah, that too. Hey, there you go, there you go. So we did, within a couple days, we put that commercial out on a Friday. And it was Email Donna for more information. The first commercial that aired in that rotation, that was the gas station one, aired at ten thirteen PM on a Friday, and she had an email in her box from a large gas station developer out of Bannockburn, literally, the next, the next day, Saturday morning. So she forwarded that to me right away, was his request to set up a meeting to come out there. And she was just, you know, like, wow, how is this for BBM and working fast, you know? And that, that particular gentleman did not move forward, but as these commercials kept airing, they were, they had meeting after meeting after meeting, and from what I understand, there is now a gas station that's being built in Bedford, along with a convenience store. And that was from those commercials, so. That was just changing, I mean, obviously Bedford had some momentum out there, but that's helped quickly. You know, it's, we know the listeners we reach, and, you know, we can make it happen. We can duplicate this, you know, with Moni. And I think collectively, really rolling out, just focusing on the South, Southwest suburbs is really going to help a lot of your communities, you know, all together. Everyone has different initiatives and events to promote, and I think this is going to be really big for this area, for this region. I did bring, for the sake of your time, in the appendix, there's a testimonial, actually a letter from Mr. Mayor Brady himself, listing some of the companies that have come on board as a result of the advertising. That was when they were just with BBM, before he extended to WGN. And then just some demographics of our two stations, you know, our household incomes, education level, homeowners and whatnot, that you can review that, at your convenience. And if you don't mind, I'm going to set this up. I just had a spec spot, produce, written and produced for Moni. Again, this isn't anything that you have to use, but just to give you an idea of what a commercial could sound like.
What Mark phone or something?
This thing is pretty loud, but yeah, I'll move it down. This thing is pretty loud, but yeah, I'll move it down.
Are you turned up?
Uh huh. I can hear. I'm not missing a word. Freezing.
The Village of MONI is a vibrant South suburb with big opportunities for new business. Located in just 35 miles south of Chicago's Loop, Mayor Farquhar and his Economic Development Team are aggressive in offering business executives everything they need to grow in today's economy. MONI is providing sizable business incentives for industrial developments as well as small to mid-sized commercial businesses. MONI is connected to a hard-working and deep workforce and has ideal logistics and proximity to major interstates. Whether you're starting a new business or looking to expand or relocate, please consider expanding south to the hidden gem of the South suburbs, MONI. Gulf Vista Estates did it in 1994, and here's why. Review a business to the South suburb of MONI, and they'll provide you with all the essentials and more to watch your business grow. Visit thevillageofmoni.org today for available business opportunities or email ruben@thevillageofmoni.org to schedule a visit and discover MONI.
So, obviously that dead air in the middle there would, we would insert like a little testimonial from a representative. If you wanted to include a partner, you know, in your program to help maybe cover the investment. But there's a lot of really unique things we can do with a 60-second spot. You know, we can make the first 20 or 30, just your general MONI branding commercial. We could do resident testimonials, we could do existing, you know, businesses here. And then go back the last 10 or 15 of that 60 to, you know, use a MONI slogan. I know, Mayor, you mentioned that would be, you had that great idea, that song by the OJs. Do you want to sing it?
No.
But if we could take a variation of that, you know, not infringing on copyright. I know that, you know, I couldn't do it for the sake of the spec spot. But MONI, 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 you know, it wouldn't be my voice. But it'd kind of be a neat, you know, I know Bedford, we use the Sonic logo with Bedford. When you hear that boing, 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 and they say businesses are popping up in the Village of Bedford Park. But it's something that, you know, people identify when they hear, you know, obviously helping you identify MONI with that song. But, so even if it's just the jingle and no, no words, you know, that's something we can explore too. We can do jingles or Sonic logos. When I worked at Panover Park, they were working on building out their Metro Retail District and, you know, their Sonic logo was a train coming in. And they were, you know, targeting restaurants, national restaurants, instead of just the mom and pops stores. There's lots of options, and we would definitely love to have you guys on board with us.
Tracy, you said jump in anytime. I'm going to jump in.
Jump in, okay.
Can you tell me a little history on Bedford Park? Because I haven't gotten tired of listening. It's really good.
Um, yes, we-
How long have you been on?
I started them, they started on BBM. They've never done, I mean, I actually remember getting the phone call, like, it was a call-in. They called wanting to inquire about radio advertising. I'm like, wait, this should be interesting, you know. What's that?
How many years ago?
I worked with them for four years, and they're still, they're on-
2009 is when they started.
They started in 2009, October of 2009.
That's when it started.
That's when they started.
And what level are they at right now on your schedule?
They are not on, I'm actually meeting with Mayor Brady tomorrow. But they're on with WBPM and they're also on with WGN. And they're about to come on board with us.
I hear them so often, I would guess it would be past the level three.
Level three?
As far as your calls.
Oh, you know what, and see, this is what I, thank you for mentioning that because I would like to touch on this. I think I did a little bit. But when Bedford kicked off and got rolling and got hot, I mean, we were getting calls from villages all over the place. All right, I want, how do I get on board with this? You know, and I can't tell you how many meetings I actually went on. And I was a little discouraged, not by the villages themselves, but by the fact that, you know, WBPM is the third-largest billing station in the country. So with that being said, it's a great station, but about 70% of their advertising commercial inventory gets eaten up by national advertisers that can pay really big money, you know, for these spots. So that does not leave a whole ton of money for local, Mr. Local Advertiser. So Bedford did start at about $70,000 their first year. And I don't even want to say what they're spending now because I don't think it's necessary that they have to spend that much. But they're doing very well. I mean, we're thinking the $700,000 range right now. But, yeah. So I kept running into these obstacles of not being able, you know, finding villages that had $35,000, $45,000, maybe, you know, $60,000 to spend. But the schedules that I had put together for them, just in my mind, did not make sense. It was not going to be an effective enough campaign. And I would rather them put their money elsewhere than with the station, you know. They may not have that type of mentality, you know. And I've known that there's been a couple villages I've heard on there that come on for two months and then they're gone. Well, that's not doing, you know, that community any service.
Yeah, my other question was, when did the, after they started advertising, when did the first company come into the community?
It was less than a year. I mean, they were, I know they were very close to closing on Keeta Banana. It was, yeah.
It was about, I lived in Bedford for 25 years, so I've been in probably six months. I would say, as Tracy indicated, at the very beginning, we were sort of discouraging. We are spending, I won't get into the figures. But given the fact that WGN and WBPM and the Blackhawks, you'd imagine. But like Tracy indicated, at the beginning, it's not easy. But at the end, it's done very well.
Well, I'm very positive in my thinking with this because obviously they're spending a lot more money because they're bringing in a lot more companies and whatnot.
Sure.
They've actually done a couple testimonials with some of the companies that have come in. I've heard, and like you, I hear, I remember coming from the radio line, it sounds like.
That was my doing, and that's what amazes me actually, is that those are still running. They haven't been there for a year and a half, but it can't hurt helping their companies, right? But yes, Magnum Medical, that's come in, Farm Tier, we did a testimonial for. Who else? We had some of the existing companies, we had Ingredient. The-
The Waymiders Group, the Hotels.
The Hotels, Mark from Midway, Mark Wglars, yes, absolutely. And it just really helps to resonate, you know, in that business-minded person. Well, wow, I didn't realize all these, you know. And it's putting people, we put Bedford out there before they were needed. And it was very successful, and there's a room, a lot more room for success stories. Things are picking up, and why not get in front of them? You know, in a unique way to a mass audience. You know, there's only so much you can do with just the grassroots marketing and lobbying and whatnot to attract these people.
Well, just get all the police bittles to last longer.
Okay.
How's that, though?
I just have a couple questions now, so.
Well, why don't we leave the selling for a bit?
So, first of all, just for clarity's sake.
Sure.
I'm really impressed, Tracy.
Oh, thank you.
I did advertising and sales and marketing for TV for 18 years.
Oh, wow.
So I speak your same language, so.
Awesome.
And I've got a lot of experience. So let me say thank you for this, for being. So that being said, and you're talking about the rotators and everything, and now you've got three other municipalities on there. For our rotators, and we don't want to get crowded in there, how can you go to guarantee us that we're not next door to Crestwood or New Lenox?
Sure, you know, we'll manage the separation really well. Some, you know, we haven't banged out all the schedules yet. I think New Lenox will be the first one to launch on the 21st. Crestwood and Lockport, you know, they're kind of going to trickle in. But the thing is, these programs, the on-air portion, with the exception of the third level, the highest level, is two weeks out of the month for your customized commercial thing, right? But then you have the promos that will always, that will be spread evenly through whoever's involved. So those will constantly be going, driving people to check you out. And, you know, that's the thing that's there 24/7, which is great. So some communities will do different weeks, you know, because what we'll do at the, when everything is finalized.
So traffic is going to call somebody and say, hey, we've got New Lenox running next week.
Run separation, right. Just a large separation within the, some people will do two weeks a month. And they'll be different weeks. You know, they're not going to be, we won't allow them to be back-to-back, so.
And then how about the banner advertising too? And I know that it's all going to be-
See, that's just impression-based, so it depends on, you know, if you want to limit your pool to, you know, within just, if you're looking, if it's residential-focused and you want to just, you're promoting your events, you know, you want people from other surrounding communities to come to your events, check out your neighborhood, possibly move here, just to bring business, you know, to your community. We can geo-target those for you, like I mentioned. But if it's business-focused targeted, I think it's, you're limiting yourself if you're targeting, you know, by some code, because people are all over the place.
So if we had, perhaps, you know, even in the same spot, if we had two spots running in the same two-week schedule, we could rotate them. So some residential, some-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes. And I encourage that, you know, Larry knows, there were, Bedford at some point had five commercials, you know, rotating. I mean, they were all industrial-focused, but, you know, some of them were more targeted. We did a water commercial to target, you know, manufacturing companies that had a big need for large water capacity.
We need a grocery store.
Yay, I'll tell you what. We could certainly, we could certainly do that. And sometimes we'll rotate them out, you know, if you want three in rotation at once, or you want to put one out for a bit, bring another one in because you want to promote a specific big event. You know, like New Lenox is their triple, or I'm sorry, they're not doing that. They're doing them, because they don't need to promote their triple play concert series because it's sold out already, but they get like-
It only goes to the Village Residence, don't you know that?
Well, it's only goes to Village Residence, correct. But if they don't sell out through the Village Residence, they open it up too. But they are doing Oktoberfest for the first time this year, which is a bigger type of festival, but they want to attract, you know, outside, you know, community members. So, so they can say, you know, hey, I really want to amp this up. Can you deliver impressions to me? Not only want them to spread evenly, put X amount of impressions, those banner ads, you know, on both sites, like two weeks, just put them all for, to promote that event. You know, so there's so many different things that we can do. And I have three assistants that are strictly just helping me with this program. We have a digital staff of like 25 people, they're awesome. We just actually moved our offices from 190 North State Street to Merchandise Mart last week. So all of our stations, we bought, recently bought WLP, The Loop, and WKQX. So we have all of our stations together, we have an amazing creative team. We don't have to jump back and forth from ABC Buildings to Merchandise Mart. But like I said, our goal is to make this this turnkey, we're almost like a mini advertising agency, you know.
And then the impressions that you guaranteed on here, were they able to see like post-buys afterwards?
Absolutely, yes. The commercial, the on-air spots, the on-air spots, you'll get, you'll get ANDO reports, I'm sorry, for the digital. So you'll see how many click-throughs you got, the traffic you got through the portal. Obviously, you can manage that on your end as well, just by seeing the website traffic. So we can provide you, you know, from your streaming commercials, how many people clicked, like companion banner. For traffic that comes into our Community Discovery Portal, how much traffic you got clicked in through your, you know, entry point there. So that is something we'll provide you with monthly. The on-air spots, we, whoever you want to kind of, you know, manage this or copy our assistant will, your exact on-air times, our longest close at 3 o'clock every day, so there'll be emails to you, faxes to you, whoever you want them, the day before, the day before they air. So you'll know your exact times the day before. For your weekend times, for your Saturday, Sunday, and Monday times, you'll get all those times on Friday by three.
And then for the interest of full disclosure, how did you find MONI?
You know, I just really kind of got a special place in my heart just from working with the Southwest suburbs and some of the businesses of Bedford Park. And when they wanted me to launch this, you know, and this is my project, I asked, I start with the South and Southwest suburbs. So I just, yeah, I, you know, printed out all the, you know, villages.
So you know why I'm asking, right? Do you know why I'm asking?
No, I don't.
You don't?
No.
We have a mutual friend, and actually you were talking about the move to Merchandise Mart.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked where you came from too. That's a little confusing, seeing that you were at BBM and now at 94.7.
Yeah.
My husband actually works for the station too, he's one of the IT.
Oh my gosh, Carlos? I love him!
I don't know why, so.
No, he is great.
Hey, we are, we are, tell him right there.
I was so happy when I saw that he came over there.
So that's why I had to say, I wanted you to say that I had no idea that you were coming.
No, I didn't ask. I really didn't. No, he is, he is wonderful. He has helped with this transition tremendously, you know, because that could have been a nightmare.
Yeah, you know, so, and actually, thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, thank you. Any more questions from?
So, Mr. Mayor, how are you planning managing this?
Well, first of all, I want to make sure it gets presented to the board professionally with the proper presentation here. And to get the board's interest on this, my recommendation would be we go with the tier two. Thank you for my recommendation. I just dropped more, because it really goes on to AM and the FM side. And I feel like that's a reasonable starting point. Depends on what the share time, if you will, would be with maybe a couple of both the businesses if we were to get them to consider, even if they didn't, I still think there's merit and value in this. It's a thing we've never done before, but sometimes when you're visionary and pioneering things, you know, partly we have to start thinking about how do we do things differently in order to get a different result. And I think there's a lot of merit in considering this, and I, I personally recommend we go with tier two. You know, Larry is constantly bragging about the success of radio with the program. No, and that's a good thing. I mean, it works, you know. And we're all having fun here now, I guess, so it's a good thing, you know. And if we can do this and we can offset the majority of the costs from the TIP fund and further the development of the TIP district itself, it recovers itself pretty quickly. You get one new business come in, it builds a new development, and next thing you know, you've just rebuilt the fund that you've taken it out of because of that development increase and the taxing bonus. So I think it's got merit, you know. We tried it for a year, we gave it our best, and, you know, we'll see where we're at a year from now. But I would think that you have to really, in all fairness, we might get something in six months. I don't know that for a fact. We did best we can to go through this in a year, maybe two years. Here's a question I have, is, as Trustee Gonzalez had asked you some questions. One of the questions I want to make sure we're all aware of. You indicated you have three other municipalities in our general region. Is there a cap?
We are working on, you know, trying to figure that out right now, actually. Now that we've divided it from a rollout standpoint to focus first on the South and Southwest suburbs and really get you guys out there and rolling first. We don't want to flood it. But, you know, everyone's fiscal planning, everything's different. So we're thinking maybe like 10 to 12 per region that we want to do. We want to make this an exclusive thing, where all these communities will have the first word refusal to either, you know, renew or not. So the only way you can get in is if one municipality goes out. So I really think by dividing it regionally, this has created more of an urgency. You know, I still have a lot of people to see and then touch, circle back with as far as, I mean, definitely there's a lot of interest, and I've put notes and all. I've probably met with a good 15 municipalities so far. And, you know, like Lamont, they, they want, they have interest in it, but it's not something they'll be able to make a decision on until after January. So, you know, but it's nice to have in front of them so they know how to budget, you know. And, and believe me, when these start, just the promotion of WLS promoting, making this a feature on both of their stations, something that's never going to go away, it's going to be huge. something that's never gonna go away, um, it's gonna be huge, and I, I can definitely see as, as they start trickling on, with the bigger demand.
And would the, would the rates likely maintain once you get locked in, or whatever that's.
They will for the year, you know, I think this, with this being a trial year, they're, they're not gonna shoot up anything, you know.
It's negotiable too.
I, I do wanna defer momentarily just to our finance director, because he's the one that ultimately I tasked with finding out, is this a good idea, is it financially sound, things of that sort? Daryl, you mind offering your two cents, I know you're constantly listening to some in your office.
Can I jump in before you ask, can I ask a question differently? Do, do we know if this is going to be something we can use TIF money for?
I'll, I'll defer to counsel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I'd like to have the board consider that side tonight, and I can explain that tonight, but how we fund it through another village, it's not through TIF, it's another way. Um, we would have to look at that pretty closely, because we gotta demonstrate how much is being towards the.
Percentage.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I think some villages sort of, let's budget, like Lamont said, let's budget, now, we did it a different way, I don't get into how we did it, so.
That's something we can do publicly, or we need to go into executive.
We just need more time.
Oh, you were timed.
Yeah, a little more, I, I know how we did it, I'd rather discuss it another time.
Okay.
I know exactly, procedure-wise, what we spent, and how successful, but, uh, we've had discussions for five years, so we work pretty well.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest to you, this falls under economic development, um, because that's exactly what we're trying to do, is to use this to bring some type of growth to Moni.
Sure.
Um, so that's the reason I asked the question about, you know, what your recommendation was, I'm not really asking the money so much as how are we gonna use it if we do it? What are we gonna market, I mean, that's the type of thing, who's gonna do it? We don't wanna just say yes, and then run out there and say, okay, what's the plan?
And there again, as creative as any one of us might be, uh, we've got the support of the entire network, if you will, where they're not expecting us to be creative. It's gonna be, uh, passive creative, if you will, they'll interrogate us to extract the amount of style, creativity, whatever else that they can, I mean, they're, they're already, you know, just snagging stuff off our website and everything else, but, you know, before anything, we go to live, we go to print, or not print, but, well, whatever, even the designing of the banner ads and things like that, that's something that they're gonna be involved in, it's all part of the, the cost. So, it minimizes the need for, yeah, we can provide suggestions, you know, if I said, well, I got a 320 by 250, whatever, and I have to give it to you, that's fine, but the reality is, they're going to take responsibility for managing the creative, making us look our best, because ultimately, if, if it doesn't work, and we look silly, or unprofessional, or anything else, it's a bad reflection on, it's a bad reflection on us, and we'll never go back. So, they're realizing that, and that's part of what's budgeted into this, um, that's, you know, as, as far as that goes, um, there's, from my perspective, and, you know, this is where we all get to interact and communicate on this issue here, I believe that there's a balance between, just like, for instance, if we're promoting retail in Moni, there are certain areas of our retail that are in TIF districts, but there's certain areas that are not. So, you, you, to, to be completely accurate on our percentages, the generic part of it that could apply to our TIF districts, could in theory be even the, the opening and closings, where you're talking about the village, and because that's all tied to that district, that could be, but if there's 10% of it, or 20% of it, that's specific to one business, or to, let's say, like Fall Fest, or something of that sort, then that can't be underwritten by TIF funds, because it's not specifically related to the development district itself. The, the grocery store, you know, you and I have talked about this, uh, the grocery store concept, if you will, the property that we have, is it, is within a TIF district, it's one of our weakest TIFs, but it's in a TIF district. So, in theory, the portion that applies to that, for the, for whatever purposes we try to, you know, make our presentation in that regard, um, that could also come out of that TIF fund if we needed to. There's other means of underwriting, and such as, and that Daryl's been sharpening his pencils, doing a lot of research, and, uh, come up some really good ideas for what we can do, looking at other communities, what they've done recently, uh, as far as how do we generate more revenue without being a burden on our, on our constituents, and there's, there's ways going about doing it, um, and Daryl is, is very involved in that process. So, in that regard, I don't believe it's gonna be an issue where we don't have the ability to budget for it, as a matter of how responsible we're gonna be in deploying it, and there again, most of this is gonna be about business development, but there's gonna be, now, I believe you indicated that if we wanted to, because you got a certain number of hit, uh, spots per month, we could actually deliberately take one month off and double up the next one, uh, things like that. And just keep in mind, every time we have a, if we allow somebody, let's say, like a Mitsu, or somebody like that, to, to buy a portion of the, a, a third of our, you know, whatever for a month, or something like that, you know, then, then, in so doing that, it's easier to identify targeted responses, to, to see the viability of that. We also get a benefit, because we're getting sales tax revenue from that business, and we're, we're bolstering their success in our community, which is more jobs and everything else. It's, overall, it's a win-win if we do it well, and I believe we have the abilities to do it well. I'm, I'm trusting on, you know, we got marketing backgrounds here, we've got, you know, economic development interests here, we've got, you know, various, you know, business and residential concerns and everything else. I think, overall, I think with everybody's input, following that up, perhaps through Ruben at this point, um, and just merely, if, as you guys have interest of topics that you think are relevant to get communicated, we don't need to all be bothering her and her staff, you know, but we could get that in a, in a form of communication, and that gets passed on, and they would respond back and say, well, based on all these different points of interest, they come up some creative, which is.
Okay. Good point, and we will have active planners for every community that we're working with, uh, my assistants that are on board with this, I mean, they're gonna be very involved with us as well, so, you know, everyone will have their own planner, some monthly, what's going on, um, you know, whoever I'm, who's gonna be your liaison here for Moni, you know.
That really was my question, was, was how do you foresee this, who's gonna be the liaison in Moni, how are you gonna, I understand you're gonna have somebody, how are we gonna handle it here, how's it gonna be managed within the village?
At least here for right now, short of actually having an economic development person, which we don't have, uh, it goes through Ruben.
We don't have to say email Ruben.
No, I like that, I like that.
But, uh, hey, it's catchy, um, you know, we can just drive people to your site, of course.
Sure, or we can create, or for that matter, for communication, we can create an email address.
Exactly, general, for inquiries, or wanting to schedule a visit, um, sure, absolutely.
So, I, I think there's a lot of merit in there, and, and I think they're gonna extract, I don't wanna oversimplify, because there is a responsibility on our part, but I think, everything I can tell, they're gonna do their part to make it so that we don't have to be radio advertising rocket scientists, uh, to be successful.
Exactly.
Daryl, you say you'd like us to sign up the following year or something?
Exactly.
Right, right, exactly, this is, we truly view this as a partnership.
Right.
If it's not successful for you, we're not successful in doing our job, so.
Daryl, if I could just get you to just, do you, do you have any comments you'd like to make regarding the, or do you wanna just defer that to the best management?
Well, I'll say that, one of the things about it is, uh, I do stream, stream music, uh, sports games, things of that nature during the course of the day, um, and I've, I've actually heard some, 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 uh, commercial ads come through for some villages, I believe one of them was New Lennox, and, you know, it was very impressive, professional, and I thought it was a good way of getting a certain, a certain demographic that otherwise probably wouldn't have, have, have heard it, or even known about it, so I, you know, I was very impressed with it. And that's, that's, that's during the course of the day, so.
One thing I would wanna point out real quick, um, that, that was a really good point, when we say that we reach of these schedules, um, you know, monthly on-air reach, and then package level one is 571,100, uh, level two, 800,100, that, that's just traditional on-air listenership, so, you know, you can't listen in your car and at your computer at the same time, so you're actually reaching, you know, it's more than that, that's minimum. That's not including every eye that's gonna follow on those ads, so it's just a bunch of touchpoints that all kinda connect the dots, you know, so it's a very well-rounded, um, campaign.
It is.
So, Trustee Gonzalez, you brought up an interesting point, as I've led you always do, um, indicating that there's a possibility that this might be negotiable to some extent, or are these.
Um, no, these, uh, these, this year, what may be negotiable is next year, if you renew, keep, you know, holding you at that rate, or adding in some extra added value, but where we've raised these, just to launch this, it's really, like, you know, it's fair.
So, if I called Mayor Preston from Preston, you didn't get who?
No, everything is, no way, come on now.
But he doesn't get to use his name.
No, if that were the case, I would, uh, yeah, no, everyone, it's, it's all the same, um, what we do for people that, you know, renew from year to year, whether it's adding on more added value, or just holding you at rate, you know, that's something that's will be negotiable, but for the onset of this launching this, like, we literally went A straight, it's like, you know.
Well, all, all that being said, I think at this point, that with the counsel of the council, um, and the advice of our finance, um, we will do everything we can to find the best method for financing this through the, the, the best means to minimize the impact on our general fund and such, such of that sort. I would like to entertain a motion for accepting tier two, so that we can at least.
Tier two is $50,000.
Correct.
Your Honor, subject to financing approval, so we still can look at the outcome of the financing.
Of course.
Yeah, so, would somebody like to make a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Paul?
Who was gonna suggest option one at this point, to see how we do the first year? Because I know it's WLS FM, it's not mirrored on AM and FM, but I do think that with this, with a schedule like this, and have them only, it's a still a good schedule for us, in my opinion.
I, I, and I appreciate that, and, and I think our conversation was, um, not the opposite, but I was actually hedging, if I were gonna pick only one, me personally, just, I'd probably be more inclined to pick the AM side, because I think more of your, your business-minded, uh, folks are probably gonna listen to the AM side more so than the FM side, now, I wish I got time to listen to the radio in general.
So, and actually, and you bring up a good point, and that's what I was gonna ask, is there a way that we can do AM and FM with this option, more with a different rotation, or are you limited?
It might be just a little too diluted, to be effective, that would be my, like, only concern, it's why I put level one, just as a base, you know, entry, we went with the FM, because it is, I mean, we have a lot more listeners on the FM, but I think I did put some, I pulled some arbitrage data, um, in regards to business decision-makers, business owners.
In a, yes, the indices are on the back, I saw that, yeah.
I, I've, uh.
There is quite a difference between.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll second the motion, so we can have discussion.
Okay, so we're talking, we're supposed to proceed.
The reason I got the motion, I'm gonna say right away, is, I, I think, uh, I'm kinda in the feeling that we have some options that kind of raise the money.
Sure.
Or the bulk of it, or a large portion of it, whatever word you wanna use, in other ways, I think Larry kinda said that, I weren't the words in your mouth, but, never, but it seems like, uh, there's some options for us.
And I'm guessing, just, Daryl, I'll be on, I'm just, I'm guessing based on what we've talked about and everything else, that probably no more than a fourth or fifth of this would need to come out of the general fund. I'm, and I'm just, because, because if the general aspect of it has to do with our TIF districts, where there's, there's gonna be a portion of that, if we help, if we get like Mitsu or Gulfis, or someone like that to partner with us in our first year, that, there, there might be six to $10,000 for each of them, which also decreases our total, I'm just saying, and this is all theoretical, but before we actually have an option, opportunity to even go further, and as Larry indicated, pursuant to a clear method of dealing with this, we, we have to have some, I want to present the board, because I'm not gonna go talk to local businesses about this, if, if the board's not even at least been interested. So, that's kind of where we're at on this, I need to have some comfort level before we go any further on this, so.
From, from my perspective, definitely interested, uh, I'm not too interested, only reason I would go along with 50,000, because I think the number one priority has to be the grocery store. Every, I can't go a week without somebody saying, what's the status on the grocery store? I would be extremely disappointed if we didn't make that the focus of this radio. Now, there needs to be other purposes of it as well, in 12 months, we're gonna have a major manufacturer, or major warehouse leaving, we've already got a major warehouse empty here. We have residential people we wanna reach out to, I mean, there's other issues as well, and other things we want to address, but I would go along with the 50, only if we earmark, not half of the money, as much as half of the advertising, let's just go out there and say, we want a grocery store, put your marketing people together, and come up with a snazzy ad that says, Moni wants a grocery store.
I think you have to, and, and I'm, and I, since you're bringing it up publicly, I'll, I'll address it publicly, and I think that we have to be careful, how we go around robbing, is how it comes across, for something, instead of marketing like Bedford Park did, they weren't robbing for a second gas station, they were merely indicating an opportunity, there's a difference in how you say things, because we don't want people to think of us as, the poor community doesn't, can't, can't have grocery store.
Right.
Because that's gonna set the wrong tone overall.
I don't believe I used the word robbing, sir.
I didn't say you did, but if we're not careful, that's the message will be conveyed.
I've heard the ads for Bedford Park for the gas station, I think they can do the same thing for a grocery store, I'm just suggesting we focus on the grocery store, if we're gonna spend $50,000. That's something that people in our community very clearly want, it was a part of the, uh, election campaign last year, we, let's use the radio station not to sell cars or run campaigns, let's use this radio station to bring economic development, specifically focusing initially on the grocery store, that's my only point.
Well, there again, as you know, we've had conversations about grocery stores and things that we're doing towards it, and I don't think that anybody needs to grandstand or do anything specifically about a particular topic at this point, but the reality is, we're working on some of that, and this is a viable means for communicating that message, but it's not the only message we have. If the only thing we ever pursue is a grocery store, then we're missing out on tons of other economic development, fill in the current space on by High Street Properties, the old kitchen facility, all that. If we put 50% or whatever percentage anybody's trying to indicate towards that one particular niche, we're missing out on everything else.
So, we're gonna spend $50,000, but we really don't have a plan that says what we're gonna promote?
I've already indicated, Trustee Olson, and I don't know if this is just a time to be contentious, or what the deal is, but I've already indicated what I, what I said, and I thought it's pretty clear.
You're accusing me of grandstanding?
Occasional.
Okay.
I mean, how many times tonight are you going to make comments, uh, aloof about my name being on one thing or another? I mean, the reality is, what's your point? Because we're trying to grow the community, we're trying to do it as a team.
Let's promote the village, that's all I'm saying, that's my point, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we just need a roll call to pursue this further, right?
All right. The mayor asked me to do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Ha?
Yes.
How old did you have?
Three to two. He's three to two.
Maybe for four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody?
Thank you so much. Since there seems to be such a turmoil tonight regarding grocery stores, I'll just talk about it, so, I've had an opportunity to, uh, talk to a couple of you, but I haven't had a chance to talk to everyone, um, and it's just a matter of time. I've been, for the last several months, I've been in conversation and research, Clark Cager has been a great asset as well, uh, his background has been very helpful, uh, the fact that he had to, had to go, uh, to the ICSC event as well was just a bonus with all that, uh, we have been in conversations and researching options pertaining to. pertaining to, how do we get a grocery store in our town? Everybody says we want a grocery store, and if we only do what we've always done, we're never gonna be able to, let's be quite candid. And I think what we need to do is recognize some of the research that Clark Hager and I have actually been able to accumulate, and that has to do with a variety of issues, one of which is, there's the Dominics, and all the Safeway, and all that in the Chicago area that have been pulled out, there is the fact that we don't fit the perfect demographics economically from the household income, we are approximately eighty thousand median household income, a lot of the preferred stores, if you will, they have a targeted audience of somewhere around a hundred twenty thousand median household income, for all the, you know, the kinda stores that we want in our town, the other stores, be it Walts, be it Burt Hads, be it, you know, whatever, they're looking at, saying, well, we got one east and west, or we got some north and south, you know, they're not looking at great competition for themselves, most of y'all know that there was discussions with Walts in the past, and it failed, there's question about whether they, how effective it is for somebody to even get into the industry, there's a whole issue with healthcare, as it relates to all the cost of employment for grocery stores, there's a lack of capital for investment in grocery stores, and, or any other industry for that, there's been a lack of investors available for that type of thing. So, over the last several months, I have been researching options, I've asked others to help you with their insight on that, their historical background, based on the industries they've served in, and have been looking into options for that, and one of the options would be, that we would actually consider, the possibility we own the land, one of the things I think Clark Hager would identify is that we've identified, when the property owner is not the same as the store operator, oftentimes there's less margin for them to work with, and it makes it even more volatile for them to consider the risk factor. We own property, we can continue to wait for somebody to see the relevance of a middle-medium, you know, scenario, or we could actually take the steps necessary, yes, we did a market study, but it was not industry-specific, it was a general-purpose market study, frankly, I wasn't impressed, I've had other people, some of you have reviewed that market study or held by now, I wasn't impressed by the results of it, and it basically said, just focus on industry, to summarize. Meanwhile, we still have our constituents saying, we want a grocery store, we want a grocery store, we all know that, and we need to find a way to achieve the goals and expectations by the constituents of our community to make that happen. Suffice to say, after a series of meetings, and research, and everything else, I believe the best approach for us at this point is to reach out to, I believe it's Dakota Group, or Dakota Worldwide, which is a recognized grocer, market analysis organization, recognized by the National Grocers Association and everything else, to come do an actual assessment, to see if there's a legitimate merit in our town having a grocery store. We cannot theorize, and hypothesize, and everything else about, yeah, we think we deserve this or that, or whatever, reality is, you're not gonna get any investor to come in here and do anything other than a glorified liquor store with a few groceries, if we don't have a substantiated market study to validate what we believe. We all believe we need one, so, and I believe the cost of that was somewhere in the range of seven to ten thousand dollars for that market study. That in and of itself could be the catalyst to getting a grocer to take us seriously, okay? And that's step one, no matter what the next step is, that is step one, we prove to ourselves and to the grocers that would consider us to be a destination, that there's merit in our expectations, or that there's not, and we put it to rest, either for now or into the future. That being the case, if we simply find out that we have merit, there's justification, and they look at that five-mile, you know, the split difference between us in the next, in each direction, and all that sort of thing, and we find out that there is significant merit in having a grocery store, but we can't find anybody to invest, because there's a lack of investable capital for that industry, because everybody's focused on filling in the voids of the Dominics, and the, some of the other things, you know, Walmarts are, you're getting one in Richmond Park, you're getting one in Olympia Fields, you're getting a Sam's Club down in Bradley, or Bourbonne, you know, and meanwhile, we're right in the middle, and everybody says, well, you can drive ten miles, twenty miles, and get what you need, you know, a lot of us, we end up getting an extra refrigerator, or freezer house, because we don't like going to the store every week, or every day, or whatever else. So, I think, one individual we talked to indicated that we probably spend on average seven hundred to a thousand dollars a year, extra, in fuel, per household, just because we don't have a grocery store in town. And if we find out that there's merit in a grocery store, and we can't get any capital investors, personally, I believe we should take seriously the consideration of the village-operated grocery store. It wouldn't be the first time, it would be a rarity, but it's, in my opinion, it's very little different than that, and villages that own country clubs, and golf courses, and other utilities, and other commodities, and things of that sort, you know, we wouldn't have the same necessary overhead, but we would have to make sure that we had adequate staffing, people that were experienced, and do what they are doing, you know, we do that in our police department, we make sure that we have the adequate staffing and leadership in our police department, we make sure that we have adequate league and council, we make sure that we have adequate public work service personnel, and everything else, there's no reason why we can't add that as a matter of public service, public health, you know, our town would be healthier if they eat better, instead of constantly eating fast food only. There is merit in considering that as a possibility. Is it my preference? No. Personally, I don't believe, this is my conservative perspective, I don't believe private sector should be, I don't believe public sector should get involved in competing with private sector, if private sector is doing its job. But, if the private sector is not going to recognize and fulfill the needs of our constituents, I believe we have a responsibility, as has been indicated to us in the, just talking to your neighbors, and everybody else, that you understand that we need an effort with this, which is not necessarily saying, we're gonna build it ourselves, but it's saying, we're not opposed to considering it. But the only way we're gonna know that for a fact is to have that substantiated by a study specific to that industry. And Clark Hager, I think he did some research, he won't talk about the Dakota Worldwide, I know you weren't prepared for it tonight, because we, frankly, I was wanting to take the time to talk to the trustees individually, prepare you with information, but as a result of talking to at least one trustee, it seems like everything's focused on trying to step over the top of that. So I just wanna present it, public knows about it, all trustees know about it, full disclosure, this is where we're at.
From what I understand, this Dakota study is so focused on the grocery store, it'll take light items that constituents or the buyers want, all these stores have lead-ins, whether they run milk a dollar cheaper that week to get you in to buy something else. This study takes into account all those things, hundreds and hundreds and thousands of items, it's a comprehensive study, we talked to several people that have been in the business for a long time, I've got a brother-in-law who's a CFO, the large food chain, he's just retired, and this is the only way to go, is with the Dakota study, and starting point seven thousand dollars with expenses, which are nominal, there's some merit there, they spend it a couple days here, rent a car, that's about it, and we'll produce the study, the full tell us, and is accepted by that industry, whether we are deserving of a grocery store, and the eyes of people do the grocery business.
Then this could be used to market the grocery store, if it comes out in a positive mode?
Well, I would hope it would come out in a positive mode, I mean, that's our goal, not that the village would even have to run one, but if we do that research, and very specifically, it would leverage us to have, instead of us just saying, we want, we want, we want, it actually gets us in a position where we say, there's money to be made in the Narrows, if you will, and there's an opportunity for private investors to come in and do what needs to be done. They're not taking us seriously, because there's not a proven track record, because there hasn't been a grocery store here since Chester's went out of business in twenty years ago, and that was not by any means a grocery store, that was a, you know, candy store, frankly.
And the larger stores have a formal plan of what they're doing, that you don't get to change, even talking to Bob Mariano, you know, they require, you know, ten acres, they require a fifty-six thousand square foot store, and their market this year is this, this, and this, and Eric can listen to anything you say.
I know it's not on the board packet for a vote, I'm not even gonna ask you for a vote tonight, I just wanna make sure we have full disclosure, if you have questions, concern, bring it up now, bring it up individually, that's fine, and it will be on the next agenda for a vote. So, get consensus from your neighbors, see how they feel about us doing a market study specific in that industry, I'm not gonna hold it up any further, I just wanna make sure that we heed to the request of the voters, so.
To comment, Mr. Mayor, you and I did talk about this previously, although I wasn't aware of it, and I'm certainly in favor of it, I just, again, I apologize if I appear to be grandstanding, that's not my intent, but my intent, this is very important, we do need to do this, in my opinion, we need to do this before we do marketing, and I think this needs to be done as quickly as possible, so that we can make the case to the grocery stores, but then we need to go out and advertise to the grocery stores, because they're not gonna come running to us, and that really is my point.
And the general populace that listens to the, I don't know how many the decision makers, I don't know that, I mean, they don't give us those demographics, but we don't know how many grocery store decision makers listen to that station specifically, and would be compelled, just based on our radio spot, if it's more general purpose, and we, oh, by the way, one of the first things they hit, when they hit our website, or that spot ads, that we can do, ads for, definitely, you can draw more visibility to grocery store opportunities, and projected two hundred thousand a week in sales, things of that sort, five acres already, you can have all that information already nuggetized, if you will, so they can look at it, go, wow, yeah, I can swallow that, I can try that, you know, but frankly, if we don't get any nibbles, if we don't get any takers, I'm, I'm not, I don't even, I didn't even mean to go there with that step two of that, well, let's just be real, let's consider that as a possibility. Step one is, we gotta prove to the people that they haven't taken us seriously, that we have merit for this, if we don't, we'll never get one. You know, the rarity of people just grabbing by a satik, we'll put a colvers over here next to the trucks. We do get people to drive through our town, and say, this is a good place to do business, most of it is hard work, most of it is proven to them, and we have to get to that information, I agree with trustee Olson, we've gotta do that information before we do the marketing, but we're never going to arrive where we have all the information, and we can't wait for the perfect storm, if you will, to make the presentation, I think, it's an ongoing, it's...
Hold on, this is something they can do fairly quick?
Within two months, six weeks, I think, before they indicate it.
I gotta respond to the Dakota thing.
But you're saying, how long did you get the study?
Yeah, I don't recall, but it's pretty quick.
Well, we just signed on potentially for a twelve-month radio program, so we have time to do something, and hopefully work that direction out for me.
I understand. And there again, given the cost of that, because it is specifically within a district, Larry, the entire cost of the study can be underwritten by the...
Well, that one, we could, I would think, going back to the economic development hand, that we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this year, once we've approved the budget for economic development, that would very clearly, in my opinion, fall in the category...
Well, that wouldn't even have to come out of general fund, as well, because that is solely within that district, and I believe it's healthy enough that it could easily cover that. So, there again, I'm not gonna ask for a vote tonight, I just, I mean, we invested, what did we, DJ, do you recall how much we spent overall for the property that we have here? Half million dollars?
I can't count on you.
Roughly.
It was close to five acres.
Yeah, the five acres, we, roughly, it's three, four, five hundred thousand dollars.
It was dual parcels, that we had.
We got the first, two acres for...
Two hundred?
Probably plus we had a million dollars.
Total, or a total?
Yeah.
Can we do a consensus on that tonight?
We can, that's fine, that'd be great, just so you know, trustee Harmon won't be here tonight, I'll lie, I say he's not here tonight, and he won't be here the next week either. We can take the road.
I'll vote for him. I'll vote for trustee.
You choose. It's not in form of a motion, so I'm just doing a roll call of consensus, trustee Wilson, you're in favor, or is it?
Yeah, this is for...
Just the potential of spending, not to exceed, say, ten thousand dollars for a regular grocery, specifically stuff.
I thought we all did a market study for ninety-seven-five a year ago, we just did a market study for nine thousand seven hundred five, or not, whatever it was, and now we wanna spend, there are seven to ten thousand dollars for something that everybody in this town wants, unfortunately, I don't see people knocking down our door with that, my consensus is absolutely not, put that in there, absolutely not, please, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Trustee Paul, you were in favor?
I want a CS.
Yes. Trustee Graham, no, trustee Gonzalez?
Hundred percent positive, this could be coming out of the TIF funds for that, that specific parcel, or for that specific study.
For the study? I believe you could take it out of TIF funds, if we're dedicating it towards that one site in the TIF, which would be...
Yeah, then you're okay.
If it's for that one site in the TIF, I think we're fine.
Okay, then I'll vote, my consensus vote would be yes.
Next, I do wanna give you a summary review, I had a meeting with IDOT legal counsel a week ago, and in that discussion, we were not getting the results from IDOT specifically pertaining to their policy prohibiting acquisition of land, prohibiting acquisition of land at municipal annexation, pre-annexation agreements, or that sort.
Did they have a policy regarding that?
Yeah, they claimed to have had a policy prohibiting acquisition of land with that, every time we asked for proof of that policy, trustee, I think trustee Horn, I think, met with me, and state rep DeLuca, and Susan Shea, and one of their counsel, quite some time ago, rep DeLuca asked quite candidly, Susan Shea and her counsel, is this a statute, or is this a internal IDOT policy? They go, IDOT policy, okay, then we asked, again, at subsequent meetings, where the local mayors had met with IDOT and things like that, they said it's a local, it's a policy, okay, fine, not getting a response, we asked for copies of their policy, didn't get it, finally, they said, you know what, I'm so ticked at the way that things have been, not being responded to, did a FOIA request, finally got a response, they took longer than we're supposed to, but, okay, at least we got a response, four hundred and how many pages later, Larry, something like that, or one of the documents, three hundred and eight-five pages, or was all the documents were fifteen, twenty pages, in reviewing that, it was just merely a preponderance of information, but nothing in there clearly stated any policy saying that they couldn't...
It wasn't specific?
It was not specific, it was just a matter of personal preference on the part of IDOT economics, they would not do that. I bring this to your attention, just so you're fully aware, rep DeLuca has been phenomenal as a resource in helping facilitate meetings, and things of that sort, huge accolades to him and his office for the, for the, for the amount of support they've given to our community, just absolutely thrilled with, especially considering that rep DeLuca's district includes Monique, but there's actually no voters in the district part of Monique, that he's at North Manhattan Road, we don't have any residents north of Manhattan Road, but he has been a great asset, ally, his office staff, not a fanny in his office, has been phenomenal. But all that to say this, we have, um, we've had discussions, we've been involved with some pre-annexation agreements, things of that sort, down in the footprint, if you will. There's parcels that IDOT owns, we've got seventeen acres that, you know, would be a great one without engineering studies to confirm it, but there's, uh, right near Eagle Fair. It's, um, it's surrounded on, uh, almost three sides, I guess, depends on the supply shape these, by municipal property. And there's no means by which for the village to possibly even deal with properties like that, they no longer need because they moved the footprint a lot aside. I just wanna make sure you're all aware of the current status on that, because it's a point of interest for us. The, in spite of SB twenty, the airport agreement where it says that they are supposed to have a healthy, good, and forward working communication relationship and all that with the municipalities involved and affected by the airport. This is proven to be anything but that, so. And it's, we're the little guys and they're the big Springfield, Chicago, um, system and we're doing the best we can. We're trying to represent our interests long-term, by having an annexation into the footprint, probably the best we could hope for would be a potential sales tax revenue for many of those properties, because they've already taken them off the tax rolls. I think Chief Neilman indicated that because of the properties that have been taken over by IDOT, he's lost over half a million dollars, I think seven hundred thousand dollars from his levy funds for the fire department. A lot of it has been taken out of his district from a taxable situation. There was a, there's been a process in years past, it's been called a leaseholder share. Which means that any revenue generated from leases or rent on property, um, that was owned by the state or, you know, situation like that, that a portion of that was supposed to have gone to the, would have gone to the taxing bodies or affected by the removal of that from the tax rolls. SB twenty has eliminated that as well. So, so you're aware, it's not without a cost, it's not without, uh, it, just bringing up the speed on that. At this point, we'll go to the officials' report. And, um, we're, we're kinda learning this still, because we just recently implemented the liaison scenario here, so, what we're gonna try to do is, we'll go through the officials' reports by department. And I'll defer to the trustees of those departments, if I, if I may. And with any questions or any, you know, support of that, don't hesitate to call my staff first. Ultimately, I think the goal's gonna be to, um, have it so that the department heads will be at the first meeting of the month with, you know, more enhanced information to supplement this, our second meeting of the month. It'll just be more routine and more a matter of approval bills and things of that sort. But at this point, we'll go to Public Works, which is Trustee Gray.
Um, I did sit down with Superintendent Gazzella last night for about an hour, and actually was speaking with him over the weekend. First was the movies in parks with the rainstorms, the decision, yes or no to do it. It was all good until the second storm come through. But I did have one concern from a resident out on Park Avenue about the reservoir, the recession pond, sorry, not the reservoir. They did take care of that Monday morning, apparently some firewood basically clogged everything up and people were concerned about flooding. And again, I did sit down with him Tuesday night and speak, so, off to a good start, he did try to get me up to speed, as you say, everything is brand new to a lot of our trustees, so, the contact between myself and superintendent have been going well and hopefully continue on to do this again. For me, it's something new, I was in Parker Recs before, so, I'm learning on the job as all our trustees will be doing so. End of report.
We're still trying to make sure we understand who's the, um, point of contact for certain things, like Carol's not here tonight, we don't have a building department manager currently. So we, a lot of the people who sit here are gonna get tasked with multiple staff-related questions, and that's okay. So, uh, next one we have on here is Parks and Rec, which is Trustee Gonzalez, and I know there's a little bit of overlap, because we're borrowing certain key staff members, if you will.
Is there anything else on that?
Huh?
Right, we may, agenda item I one, still shows our, our agreement for our stormwater project under, uh, Trustee Gray's, we need to discuss this real quick before we move on to, uh,
Sure.
I to.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't, I didn't see it specifically, I was like-
It was a-
Well, it's directed at me, I guess.
I apologize. Just wanted to get it out there real quick before we get off track.
Yeah, I got, yeah.
Your world.
Two minutes, two minutes, real quick here, and I hope everybody was able to read that, thank you. Uh, I've been recently appointed to the Will County Stormwater Management Committee for, uh, Committee for a Municipal Rep. In submitting projects to try to help Will County fund some of our stormwater needs. Two projects were submitted, one was received, where we can get twenty-seven thousand dollars to help some stormwater infrastructure that we need. These funds are gonna be focused more towards the southern end of Egyptian Trail slash Derby Meadows in the wetland areas. This is a cost opinion that was attached to that, that was needed by the stormwater committee in order to approve the funds. They need to know about what the project would cost before they would release any funds to the village of Moni. I tasked Jeff from Vantage Point to walk the grounds, look it over. He was a, a part of that in his internship in his beginning, in setting up wetlands back in the day, very familiar with it. I also reached out to our current engineer on the Egyptian Trail project, on the credentials of Jeff, working with Vantage Point, since this will kinda work hand in hand. He was very familiar with the work, liked them very much, and said, uh, we shouldn't have a problem at all. So, in this proposal that was submitted with the stormwater project, there are a couple of scenarios, wetland delineation, engineering illegal, in case there's access agreements that need to be done. Topo, uh, informing if necessary. The scope of the construction projects will probably be bid out because of the cost estimation, so that will go through a bid process. This is more of an agreement for professional services to have Vantage Point oversee the operation. As we will have to fund the operation entirely, submit these claims to Will County, and then Will County will pay us the portion of money that was allocated for that. In this project, uh, it, it's kinda hard to see under black and white copies, I have color available. There is national wetland inventories around the areas that are in question. That is only why there's a hypothetical in there that states we might have to do some, uh, inventorying of the wetlands. It states it on a letter from Vantage Point, I'll take any questions, I think my two minutes are up.
Thank you, DJ.
If there is no questions, I guess I would just-
Entertain a motion, sir.
Entertain a motion to approve, uh, of the request to be able to get this project done. Will County's funds run from January to December, so it's imperative that we get it done during this fiscal year, or else we will lose these funds.
They're fiscal year, not our, which is half.
They're fiscal year, yeah, they're halfway through. And it was a, kind of a bone of contention with Will County, they were very patient with us, and holding these funds while I got this project together in a short period of time, being underfoot. Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Thank you.
Okay.
Justin Gonzalez, roll call please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Yes.
Crasik?
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, um, make sure I don't miss any others.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Next on here is Parks and Recreation, which is Trustee Gonzalez, I know there's some upcoming things with Holston, so, uh, Trustee Gonzalez, you, if you don't have a report, that's okay too.
Uh, just really quickly too, in my two minutes, um, I did get to speak to Ruben last Friday about some of the things that we have coming up. And of course, within two weeks, two and a half weeks, we'll have Kids Day in Moni again, and they've done, him and Patty have already done a really nice job in getting a lot of things together for us and kind of repeating the, the beauty that we had last year in a very short time. First of all, I wanted to make another plea for more volunteers, because we will need a handful more. I know we've gotten a fabulous response from the churches already and a couple from the community. And I know I got to speak to Mrs. Herlin tonight, and she is going to do her, her due diligence and try to find us ten or twelve from Gulf Vista as well. And we know the Gulf Vista volunteers have always come through for us in the past. And secondly, I wanted to bring up to everyone too, that IPR is a pity rescue, I've had a meeting with them and spoken to them. They are invited to Kids Day to do an, um, of, an event, an educational event for the kids. They've spoken up and they're tickled to death to be invited, so just to clear the air of anything, they were very pleased. And they're gonna be setting up a table and have dogs from two to four P.M., but what they've also come forward and said they'd like to do an educational event. And to, to Mr. Holston's response from last time when they were here, that he's terrified of dogs. And so what they do oftentimes for schools, and how to approach a dog, and when to know when they're being, um, uh, vicious or that they're showing signs of being scared or something, so kids and people are aware of how to approach a dog. And so they'd like to do that as well. And I think that would be very well timed for that day as well. And then I know too, that we've got sponsorship letters out for Kids Day, and to know too, that Fall Fest is coming up within nine weeks. And so within probably four weeks' time, we'll have a sponsorship package ready to go out for Fall Fest as well. End of report.
And the movie last week, we got rained out, and we were getting rained out of reduced sense.
She was in the loop, I did text her.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's just like, yeah, I mean, you could have picked a rainy or windy seven, June, or August.
No, and then, and I've got a grand party on Saturday, so I will be unavailable to volunteer for that night, so. If we do go, if we're allowed to go ahead with it by, from other nature this weekend.
And we might just be a bunch of nut jobs in evidence, so, considering that's what the name of the movie is.
Appropriate first movie, I'd say.
Sure. There you go. Okay, thanks for your business development, Trustee Olson, please.
On two fifth, Assistant Mr. Barbaray and I went to Joliet for a meeting, Will County Economic Development Commission, uh, presentation. Not much change or difference there, what they're looking at and what we're looking for as a community. And as everybody here can understand, I'm very passionate about economic development. I have had a lot of calls from people in the community over the last two weeks, they've called me at work, they've called me at home. And I think most everybody has similar interests and similar concerns. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I are both very passionate people, and sometimes we pick on each other, one, because we have a lot of respect for each other. But I think we really have to focus on a few things, and one of them is who we are and what we wanna be. That's one of the messages we hear from all, that I hear from everybody in the community is, what are our roots? What do we wanna be? Now, don't hear the same thing from everybody, and I guess that's why we're here, as, as a board and as an organization, is to try to determine what's best for the village and what the village wants. And we probably are gonna disagree on that, but I do think we have to continue to focus on that. And everybody talks about infrastructure, that was one of the things everybody said, you know, we need our roads picked up, we need roads improved, we need this, we need that. But then when you start talking about how are you gonna pay for it, we don't want any companies to come into town, but we don't wanna pay for it on our own taxes. Somebody has to pay for this. So again, I think that we're getting closer. Mayor, you and I have talked about making sure somewhere within the village administration, somebody at some point in time has to be designated that economic development contact. It cannot be a trustee, it should not be a political figure, it should be somebody who's paid staff. And we haven't quite agreed yet on how to do that, but I think we agree with this for a minute. End of my report.
In the finance, uh, Trustee Horn is not in here tonight. Daryl, I, I know we need to get our budget approved. Are we ready for a meeting Saturday next, Monday? Where are we at on that?
I have a budget draft ready, uh, however, I wanna get it to the, I'd like to get it to the trustees for review before we do kind of sit down as a board and, and, and go over it.
Great. Next.
We have two meetings, basically.
Well, we have to have, we have to have it published two weeks, ten days, whatever it is, prior to the public hearing that we're gonna hold. I'm not sure if the trustees have individually had the opportunity to contact Daryl specifically, I, I know that we've kinda changed a few things and all that. And that's why I'm trying to make sure that, you guys have a copy of the budget, as we've been discussing and all that, there's been some nuances and some kinda back and forth. Daryl's been doing the best he can to, you know, to manage all of that. I believe we need to have at least one more meeting, whether that be the public hearing or not, I don't know that we're ready to have the public hearing, if we're still unsettled on a few issues. So, um, is next one, is a week from now, is that the first Wednesday of one? Mr. Drusbeck, do you have a meeting for that night scheduled?
Yes.
Is it a brief meeting?
It can be.
And we've double tasked the rooms in the past if we needed to, I'm just thinking that, is, I, I know we're getting into the fourth and all that, but if we don't move this along, or, I, I just, I don't wanna be in a situation where we're not prepared to actually have it posted and have a, have a budget. We have to have it. First quarter of, uh, this year. Which means that, um, frankly, in order to schedule the public hearing, the public hearing could be scheduled for the second meeting in July, at a regular board meeting. Would be fine. If we were able to meet next Wednesday, that would give us our, that actually gives three weeks for publication. Correct. Right. I know it still gives us a little bit of time to sound off, maybe any final adjustments we needed to for delivery of that. So I'm, I'm proposing that we consider a public hearing on the fourth Wednesday of July. And a special meeting next Wednesday, the second. To kinda hash over and figure out any last little nuances to the budget. Allowing us to then have yet another, one, we don't have one week after that before we actually have to have it, the posted bu- budget available for the publicity.
Exactly, it's gotta be available for public inspection, so you've gotta have it upstairs.
Right. So if we have our meeting next Wednesday, and then that gives us a week to finalize and have it posted and published, 'cause you have to have it, well, ten days, but, you know, just for safety, you know, just. So if we got it done, and you could work out the, the last little adjustments that has worked in this Russian, then we'd be ready to go for our meeting, our regular meeting. So we're only gonna have one special meeting that, unless for some reason it works, but now we, it says we're going overtime. I'm trying to avoid that unnecessarily.
Free, Mr.?
Is everybody else free for July the second?
Exactly.
Let's start a little bit earlier, say six o'clock, if we can.
Chamber meeting, then.
Well, this should take President Polling up.
Yeah, I think the chamber will run itself, um, for one week, one month, I, I'm-
You set a time, I'll be in-
Six o'clock, I'm thinking. 'Cause I'm not sure, I'm, the meeting will go, the only topic will be the budget. Okay, so.
When will we get it published, March third?
Let's see if Daryl can work out any final adjustments he's needing to make based on recommendations and have it to you by this weekend.
I'd like to give it to you by Friday.
Fri- Friday afternoon, we should have something available for them to, to adjust, to review. With all, with all the adjustments that have been recommended up to that point. Yeah, so let's, uh, entertain a motion to, number one, have a special meeting at six o'clock on July second. Entertain a motion for that.
Make the motion.
Trustee Pop?
I'll second.
Trustee Razor?
Trustee Holston?
Yes, Pop?
Yes.
Crasik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, a motion, do we need a motion for a public hearing?
Yes, for the second.
All right, secondly, a, a motion to hold the public hearing at the fourth Wednesday. Thank you. Secondly, a motion to hold the public hearing at the fourth Wednesday, July 23rd, and we can have it as part of a regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to open that, or are we just merely addressing during the meeting?
You do what happened, like after the roll call, and then during the meeting itself, you have the public hearing, post-public hearing.
So okay, I should do that at six thirty, do that by itself, and it's our official, your regular meeting. So a special meeting on July 20th, is it a special?
No, you can make it part of the regular meeting.
We can just make it part of the regular meeting, fine. So, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to have a public hearing on July 23rd at the regular board meeting for approval, presentation, public hearing of the budget.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Sharon Gonzalez and Holston.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Prazek.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes, understood.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Daryl, anything else on finance?
As far as I met with liaison and horn. Met liaison, liaison horn about internal policy for bill paying. He's got it up, he looked it over, and was very approving of it. However, I'm not sure how he wants to present. I'd rather pray him to be here and discuss it with the board and the trustees.
He won't be there until it's, he won't wait, but you can postpone that, so.
So then, the budget? No, the, there's an internal policy for bill paying.
I'm sorry. And trustee Gonzalez has brought it up, and there's been some discussion, we've researched other communities.
Correct.
First of Park, Park Forest, and a number of other communities. By the way, I have also a survey of, we give you a little more time, I guess, and I've got a survey that I submitted a request with the management managers, Sussberg management managers, to pack it. We can review that as long as you're done, so.
That's all I had.
How is the PSM? Can't say it right.
PSM, yes.
Thank you.
PSM is our online vendor. It's our first time going out. We've had some bumps along the road, but I think the next building cycle will be a lot smoother. There's some finishing touches as far as the interconnection between our website and theirs. How we want to have that site look as whereas we don't want it to seem like we're leaving our website going somewhere else. We'd rather it look like we continue to be on the same website. So there's, there's some things that, that we need to improve there, but for the most part, I believe everyone that tried to get on was able, well, there were some kinks there, but they were able to speak with me, myself, and Michelle, and we were able to walk them through to get them, get them through. But I think everyone's more than happy that we do have that ability to do so with online bill pay. Today was kind of a rough day because of turn-offs and things of that nature, but we got through it and we'll continue to get better at it, so.
Thank you. Building Department, building enforcement?
Yeah, just, I don't want to jump the gun on our agenda, but the purchase of property, I felt, fell under that a little bit, and I believe we might need, I like that, I don't know, which is going to be an asset to the village. Also, there's a meeting that you may be aware of a couple days ago, we're going to have it on 9:30 on this Friday. And I did have a short meeting with our code enforcement officer to let her know that I'm on board, not to bother her, but to help if I can, so. End of report for that.
Thank you so much. Public Safety, trustee Razik.
Thank you, Senator.
Just that we had our first meeting immediately after the appointment, we didn't wait very long to do that.
Sure.
Ask the agenda for vehicles. That was, they're, I'll meet with trustee Razik again right before we come, or right after we come over there and, on the report and come over with.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's an area there that should say public safety slash police.
So, you guys got any?
Yeah, we got, we had a phone conversation. I discussed kind of updates. We've got a, more length later this week.
It's an evolution.
I'm sorry?
It's an evolution, I know.
Yes. We're a lot of schedules here, a lot, a lot of schedules, so we're trying to, you know, come on together and work, so. But we have, and I, and I guess I have a question for the board, just to see if, to help us facilitate a little bit more grease in the wheel here, or anything that we can do to accommodate, to keep that communication flowing and growing, you know, I'm hoping, we're hoping. And I think it's a good thing. I mean, right off the initial first week, second week, we're into this and already, I think we've had a lot, a lot of communication also.
I'm learning. We're all learning, and I appreciate the patience in trying to figure out how to best serve our community, what we can do, and so far, I believe, and I think it's only going to get better, so thank you, room, for that. Anything else from the officials? Any additional reports from any of the officials on the head? Charge report.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got two items for force consideration. The first item, last board meeting, we talked about purchasing property at 5234 West Court Street. The purchase price was actually C thirty thousand dollars. Contract's been prepared in respect to that purchase. I have ordinance for the board to view of consideration when you purchase property in approval among yourselves to approve said purchase, not for the board's review. It's an asset's deal, just like we do with other sites, but it's for the board to view.
Have you certainly started to be in a conversation with the council?
I've given her a call, your honor, until I had the actual contract. We've got to present the contract, it's all cash. I think I put down a thousand dollars earnest money, we close within, I think, thirty to forty-five days. So, you know, it's all cash deal.
Okay. But you've been in conversation with citizens, do you?
I've given her a call back and talked.
I understand a motion to approve the ordinance, is the ordinance number?
Sixteen eighty-seven.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay. Pop and Razik. Roll call please.
Trustee Pop. Sorry? Sixteen eighty-seven.
Roll call, trustee Pop.
Yes.
Prazek.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next one's repeal, actually permit ordinance. We had a meeting, myself, the mayor, a few other individuals on Friday. We're waiting for some permit fees from other villages to see what they're possibly charging on different code violations. I don't think we'll see that yet until we have the next board meeting.
I think, wasn't this also pertaining to, since we have a transient merchant, we're repealing the solicitor's permit?
What we're going to do is add that to the transient merchant ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to add one change in the transient tonight, but we did pass it last board meeting. We're going to add wording about solicitation for services.
So basically, we'll merge the two concepts into one, one compact?
Yeah, we're just amending that one, which I'll bring for the next board meeting.
So you're going to repeal the oldest solicitor's area and then move it in, so it's all in one place?
One, one level.
Perfect. So that doesn't need to be held tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, so. Anything else?
No, sir.
New business segment?
Can I just ask one more thing? I know that we had talked about it last week, too, that there was the one, we were going to do an amendment to the gaming permit ordinance, so I wondered if we could, the two of you and I, kind of draft something for the next meeting to put just the one little preamble.
Regarding raffles?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, I know my.
No, 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 that's fine. I have reviewed probably, I would say, ten other communities just to get some idea about it. And what they've done is basically, they just took the state statute and made it verbatim with their local. But we would be the first one to draft something like that, and it might be questioned in the future by, not by the board, but by an entity, but we would be the first one to do something like that. But we can, you should sit down, don't worry.
Anyone else? Open to public, non-agenda items, forward, try to be nice, give your name, number, don't worry. Kind of under the point, if you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. I don't believe we have any reason to go to executive session tonight.
No, sir.
Okay. No action regarding executive session. Time is now eight fifty-seven on the campaign motion.
Second.
Razik.
Gonzalez.
Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.